So we do have a quorum. I am going to read our notice and then we'll do Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, we greatly appreciate our staff, council, and residents adapting to our teleconference format due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota State Statute thirteen D dot zero two one that permits a body to hold a meeting by a telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being livestreamed to the City of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of the public record. After each agenda item is read and staff gives a report on the agenda item, it will be called upon, I will call upon each council member individually if they have questions on that particular item. If you wish to make a motion or second or motion or a second motion, please state your name first. All votes on all items will be completed by roll call to meet the standard for State Statute thirteen D dot zero two one. All right, you think I would know that by heart, right? Kind of at that point. All right, Pledge of Allegiance, please, you can see the flag behind me. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation for God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with open forum. Mr. Linwin, have we had any letters that were sent out?
Mayor, we do not have anything, anyone on for open forum.
All right, approval of minutes, number one on our agenda. Consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for July seventh, twenty twenty. If we do not have any comments or changes, do we have a motion to approve?
Member Shilling so moved.
Okay, so we have Member Luger for first, Member Shilling, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, I'll go around the room, please. Member Jaeger.
Hi.
Uh, Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Uh, Member Luger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, so it does pass. We'll move on to the consent agenda, number two, three, four, and five. Does anybody wish to pull any one of those agenda items for further discussion? If not, we need a motion to approve consent agenda two, three, four, and five.
So move.
Okay, so we have a first by Member Shilling, and do we have a second by Members Zirwas?
Sure do.
Perfect, I'm going to go around the room. Um, Member Luger.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Jaeger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, it does pass. Um, receipts of reports from officers, boards, commissions, and department heads, number six, seven, eight, nine, and ten, is there anybody who wishes to pull one of those reports for further discussion? All right, there is not, we'll move on to communications, which is number eleven. Ms. Dumas, I think you're going to just do really briefly about the one or two changes, correct?
Yes, yes, so the main change that prompted the addition of this item was that the governor passed a new executive order which mandated that face masks be worn at all times indoors. And so this will now apply to all visitors of city facilities and public buildings throughout the city, so that includes businesses and other organizations in the community. So we have updated our business preparedness plan to reflect that change and will be enforcing it moving forward.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Dumas on number eleven on our agenda? Not seeing that, we'll move on to number twelve, which is new business. To consider Resolution twenty dash oh eight dash six seven, a resolution approving the rezoning of Z dash twenty dash zero zero one commercial to industrial. Application Austin Hallberg for Hallberg Inc., location west of Forest Boulevard at two seventy seventh and two seventy ninth street, property ID number two one dot one one zero eight four dot seven two and two one dot one zero two nine three dot zero zero. Mr. Weck, are you going to take this one for us?
I am, Madam Mayor, and Mayor, council members, Austin Hallberg of Hallberg Inc. is requesting a rezoning of those parcels we talked about. Planning Commission reviewed the application. The proposed rezoning meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance, so they're recommending approval of that rezoning from the commercial, commercial district to the industrial district.
All right, and are there any questions? Please state your name first and let us know what questions you might have. Actually, you know, I don't go around the room. Um, so do we have, let's start with Member Shilling.
I have no questions, Mayor.
All right, and Member Luger.
I have no questions.
Uh, Member Zirwas.
Where exactly is that property?
Uh, Members Zirwas, if you remember, along sixty one and thirty five, there was a space that had been for sale by Shilling for twenty years. Um, not, not, not our council member Shilling, but, but the realtor Shilling. That's where that is, so it's kind of right across the street from two hundred seventy third street, just north of where the Morel Trucking is.
Oh, okay. I, I remember it is now, yeah. I, no other questions, that's what I was.
All right, and Member Jaeger.
Uh, yes, um, is the potential outdoor storage the only reason to change the zoning to industrial?
Not just outdoor storage, but just any storage, mini storage or any type of storage would require to be in the industrial district. So whether they had a building or, or it was all outdoor storage, either use would require the industrial district to be, to be allowed in that area.
Okay, can, and this wouldn't be considered a service business or anything to keep it commercial?
No, no, because we specifically say many storages in our industrial district.
Okay, um, can the project be done without outdoor storage?
I, right now, I think, we haven't submitted a site plan application yet, but in conversations, they are looking at buildings and some outdoor storage.
Yeah, I, I saw the, the, Mr. Hallberg submitted was about a hundred fifty to a hundred units outdoor. Um, previously, the city has been discouraging outdoor storage, so what makes this project different?
Um, right now, we're really only looking at the merits of whether to rezone it to the zone to, from commercial to industrial, we're not looking at a specific use. It, although that's what they're planning on using it for, it could be used for any of those other items that are, that are permitted or conditional uses in the, in that industrial district. So although it's, it's, I think it should be something that should be on the mind of the commission member or the council members to, to deny it based on a, a project that hasn't specifically been brought in yet, probably isn't the best way to do that.
Okay, and if, if the RV storage falls through, will there be any negative effects on the residential developments across the street and north of the subject property?
If it was left vacant, I don't see any difference from today or later in the future. If it's going to be used as something out of the storage, then we would look at that either as a, as a site plan review or a conditional use permit review. And, and that whatever that potential use might be may or may not impact the adjacent properties.
Because, I mean, I have no problem with a nice and, with a well-kept and appropriately screened building on there, but I am concerned about the outdoor storage. Uh, and I am concerned about any other, the other industrial uses such as heavy industry, which is a, heavy industrial, which is a conditional use that could go in. As I'm looking at it, you have residential across the street, you have, well, now it's zone agricultural, but to the north, it's, you know, houses. And I, you know, I'm a little leery about, uh, you know, where its houses backing up right up into an industrial parcel.
That is a concern, but, but at some point, there's going to be that transition and as our comp plan and I think other communities, the, the major freeway for one and then County Road Thirty, which just turned from State Highway sixty one to County Road Thirty, are some of those mitigating factors where you're having that increased traffic and, and the increased visibility. Those are typically areas where you would see an industrial or a commercial impact. Again, again, through the comprehensive plan process, that was what the city had looked at being placed there was industrial. During the current review, we're not, the planning commission isn't looking at changing anything along that corridor. So if, right now, that's what is comprehensively planned for and, and that's what they're asking for, is to be zoned as we're having comprehensively planned.
Okay, because like I said, I could see light biz, you know, we don't have a designation for light industrial or general business. I'm more worried about some of the other things that could go in, such as the heavy industrial. And then I also took into, taking into account the people who cut the comments that were included in the packet.
All right, is that all your questions?
Um, yeah.
Member Luger, I mean, sorry, Member Jaeger.
Yeah.
All right, um, if there are no further questions, we do, we do need a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash oh eight dash six seven, I'm not going to read it all, but a resolution approving the rezoning of Z dash twenty dash zero zero one commercial to industrial application Austin Hallberg of Hallberg Inc. Do we have a motion? We have a motion to approve by Members Zirwas, do we have a second?
A second, Member Luger.
We have a second by Member Luger and around the room for yes or no. Member Jaeger.
Nay.
Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Member Luger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, it does pass. Number thirteen on our agenda to consider ordinance zero two zero zero two an ordinance for impervious surface area. Mr. Weck, I think you're on for this one as well.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, council members, I think maybe two years now that we were, the commission was asked to look at impervious surface areas. We have done that through guidance with WSB and their planner, looking at some different ideas and what we could do right now in the non-shorland areas. For residential, they're allowed up to thirty percent impervious, and in the commercial areas and industrial, they're allowed fifty percent impervious. And we've granted, I think, three or four variances to allow some industrial properties to, to increase their impervious as long as you're taking care of stormwater. What we're proposing in the residential areas, increasing that impervious area to, I'm sorry. Oh, it's building area from twenty percent to thirty percent, and then for, for impervious for residential from thirty percent to fifty percent. And in the commercial and industrial areas from fifty percent to seventy five percent, and that would be in those areas that are not shoreline regulated. In the shoreline area, we would not be changing any of the residential single-family homes from twenty five percent, it is now, it'll stay twenty five percent. And for the areas that are commercial, we would allow up to seventy five percent, but they would have to go through a conditional use permit process to make sure they're taking care of stormwater and then with some increased standards concerning trees and basically screening out of the use if it's within the shoreline and, and on a body of water. So where that would be applicable would be Heim's Lake or by the hospital. Comfort Lake, there are no commercial uses allowed there, so that, that should not be impacted by those, those changes. So the planning commission is recommending approval of the ordinance. They did hold a public hearing, we had, I don't believe any public comment on it. I'm open for questions if you have any.
All right, um, around the room, please, for questions, Member Jaeger.
Yes, um, I noticed in the, in the material that the watershed district was not thrilled about increasing the residential impervious surface.
That is correct.
Is, um, why? Uh, it's, it's just like, um, something to be concerned about?
I think the watershed, in, in part of their comments, to them, any increase beyond ten percent impervious is having an impact on the water bodies within the watershed. So, but I think what, what we do and then what we're trying to do with other cities also is to mitigate any of those problems by having stormwater rules that are, are followed in the stormwater treatment before the water leaves the site. So there are mitigating factors to, to, to take care of that.
Okay, I also saw in the, in the material that there was discussion about, this was mostly for commercial and multifamily properties. If that's the case, why did we increase the residential away from the shoreline districts?
I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay. And are these changes the minimum needed so that the city doesn't have to grant a bunch of variances?
Well, we're allowing up to seventy five percent, that, there's no guarantee that someone might come in and want more than seventy five percent, but I think that fell into line with what the majority of those various applications we had already approved.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Members Zirwas.
No questions.
Member Shilling.
I have no questions, the report covered everything, everything very well for me, thank you.
Member Luger.
I have no questions either.
Um, I'm just going to say at the planning commission, it was very good to have WSB that was involved on this. Gave us a lot of direction, answered a lot of questions, they were very thorough. Um, and we all know that we have to be very careful with the watershed district and making sure that everything is, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and, um, so sitting in that meeting for the planning commission, WSB did a really great job and really helped us through what we needed to do. So I'm very comfortable with this, um, and I don't see any issues with it whatsoever, so, um, with that, I'm going to make the motion to approve number thirteen ordinance zero dash twenty dash zero zero two an ordinance for impervious surface area, do we have a second?
Shilling will second.
We have a second by Member Shilling, I'll go around the room, please. Uh, Member Luger.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Member Zirwas.
Hi.
And Member Jaeger.
Hi.
So passes, number fourteen, to consider ordinance zero dash twenty dash zero zero three an ordinance amending storm shelters. Mr. Weck, I'm just going to just keep it right on rolling through you.
We're after this one, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Madam Mayor, council members, this is a provision that had been in the, actually started with the zoning ordinance for the township and carry through when, when we merged the city, the township together and their zoning ordinances. We'd, a, a good number of homes are protected with storm shelters because of this ordinance. But there was an issue with the Housing First Minnesota with some other cities and we kind of got wrapped up into it when they found out about us, us as well. So in essence, we can't create a building code that's more, well, that's different from the state building code, whether it's more restrictive or not. So in their opinion, this does exceed the state building code. Talking to the city attorney, they, they agree. So we're, we need to, I haven't been enforcing it since I received the letter, but we should delete that from the ordinance, so, so it's no longer a question for, for anyone that's looking to develop in the city. There are building code requirements for storm shelters in mobile home parks, so we do have those at Birchwood Terrace and the River Bend, so there are storm shelters for them. And the state building code is starting to look at them for some other commercial type residential uses too, but not single-family homes. So again, the planning commission is recommending that, that the ordinance be amended to remove that storm shelter requirement.
Mr. Weck, I have one question regarding this. I think that keeping our residents safe are very important and I can understand why that was originally in there. If we, if we do approve to take that out, my question would be this, can we recommend that they might think about, and I'm using the words, that they may think about a storm shelter for safety, or can we not say that at all?
I, I, I don't think there's anything wrong with recommending some kind of shelter requirements, but there's nothing I could say you have to.
Okay, all right, Mr. Linwin, would you agree with that?
Uh, yes, Mayor, members of council, I, I agree with Mr. Weck and, and the mayor's recommendation. We can certainly recommend and indeed encourage our, our citizens to be putting in these storm shelters and safe rooms, but there, there's no, going to be no teeth behind the encouragement aside from just informing them of the safety that goes along with those.
And the fact we want them to be a resident for a really long time. So, okay, all right, um, we'll open up to questions then, uh, Member Luger.
I have no questions.
Member Shilling.
No questions.
Member Zirwas.
I have no questions.
Member Jaeger.
No questions.
All right, and we need a motion to approve number fourteen on our agenda ordinance zero dash twenty dash zero zero three an ordinance amending storm shelters, do I have a motion to approve?
Member Shilling moved.
We have a motion to approve by Member Shilling, do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Zero second.
Okay, we've got Member Luger as the second, we'll go around the room, uh, Mayor, or, um, Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Jaeger.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Member Luger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, it does pass. Number fifteen on our agenda to consider Resolution twenty dash oh eight dash six eight, a resolution approving a summary ordinance for the amendment for an ordinance for impervious surface area and storm shelters, so Mr. Weck, I believe this one's your last one.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor, um, this resolution would be to, for the summary publication of the ordinances. It gives a brief explanation of what was, what the city just adopted to keep the publishing costs down. It's, otherwise, it could be like a hundred bucks to publish the whole ordinance. So this is just to publish that summary of the ordinance and to make it publicly known.
All right, uh, round the room for questions, Member Jaeger.
None.
Members Zirwas.
I have no questions.
Member Shilling.
No questions, Madam Mayor.
Member Luger. And Mayor Iverson has no questions, so we do need a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash oh eight dash sixty eight, a resolution approving a summary of ordinances for the amendment of an ordinance for impervious surface area and storm shelter. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some more.
Some more, Members Zirwas.
So we have first by Member Luger and second by Members Zirwas. Awesome, all right, we're on the room again. Uh, Member Jaeger.
Hi.
Members Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Shilling.
Hi.
Member Luger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson, it does pass. Number sixteen, to consider and discuss the potential uses of the City of Wyoming Care Act dollars for city expenses, Wyoming businesses and community support. Mr. Linwin, will you be taking this?
I will, Mayor. Council members, uh, Ma- Mayor Iverson, I'm going to give you a brief presentation to go along with this topic as we start those discussions, so if you just bear with me for a second. Council members, on June twenty fifth of this year, Governor Walz released the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act funds to county, cities, and townships. The City of Wyoming was allocated approximately six hundred and five thousand dollars. The CARES Act funds can be used to support services to small businesses, hospitals, and individuals impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. This will give the council a little bit of background and how the city may want to start looking to utilize some of these, some of these dollars. So I'm going to start going through this slide, slideshow, just to give the council a little bit of background on this. The Medicare Act requires that relief funds are only used for the following, and that's that they're a necessary expenditure incurred due to the public health emergency respect of the coronavirus disease. Were not accounted for in the budget and were incurred in the period between March first and December thirtieth of two thousand and twenty.
Robert, are you trying to present right now, there's not a presentation going?
There's not.
You're not screen sharing.
Oh, I apologize, I thought my, I thought it was sharing, I apologize. Thank you, Kelly.
There we go.
All right, good now?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Okay. Um, we'll keep going here through that. The, the way we would determine some of those eligibility would be to go through this, one, it'd be a necessary expenditure reasonably necessary to public health, a public health emergency. Two, it wasn't accounted, unaccounted expense, not in the budget prior to March first, uh, March first of two, in twenty twenty. It incurred during the COVID period, March first to December first, and performing or delivering that occurred during this period. As I had stated, the City of Wyoming received approximately six hundred and five thousand dollars. Each city township greater than two hundred people received that funny, that money. If the money is not spent by cities and townships by November fifteenth, the money does go back to the county. There is some potential, it's been talked about that it may be extended past this date, but this is what we're going by right now. Um, so we would have until November fifteenth to allocate those dollars, and then as I stated, they'd be returned to the state, which then would be given to the county. There's no mandate, I guess, what we, what we can, as far as how we, we spend those dollars other than the treasury, what the, the information they've given so far to the city. As of seven thirty, the city has spent approximately eighty seven thousand dollars in costs, and that's payroll costs, public health and public safety, and payments for services that are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 health emergency. That would be our public safety, individuals' time, our admin people time, anything that we've had to do in regards to setting up for this pandemic, those plans that we've shared with the council, any of the necessary things we've done so far with technology in regards to whether it's Zoom, whether it's VPNs to have the ability to have staff in the beginning of this period to work remotely as necessary. The improvements that we've done at City Hall in regards for distancing or the plastic barrier that's in place. These are all things that it can be used for, that payroll, public safety, employee time, et cetera. It's not for replacement of law for revenues, property tax relief, and pay, payment for payroll of normal duties. As you can see, there's a, as we talk about this, you can see our pot up here, the six hundred and five, there was one component that we're going to really focus on tonight, and that's a small business light relief, and then we look at the City of Wyoming functions, the public health emergency management, other departments, and what's needed and what we continue to look at and how much is going to be allocated toward that. And then we look at that small business relief and how we administer, what are the requirements, is how much is allocated. Staff is right now presenting to the council that we look to utilize these funds as follows, that we keep covering our direct on budgeted costs related to COVID. We set aside for future cost impacts, cover all staff costs that are being tracked as COVID-related, small business relief, residents and community, and then potentially a second round of business or economic assistance. The major component of this tonight that we wanted to talk about the council is Assistant City Administrator Dumas and I have been meeting with other city administrators within the county and the county administrator to discuss that small business relief fund. What you've seen in many cities and many other counties is there's been a collaboration to discuss how we're going to use those funds. For instance, the county has set aside ten percent of the funds that they receive to go towards the small business relief fund. Many other cities have done the same, the Wyoming EDA has recommended to the city council asking that you set aside that ten percent for, for business. This, these funds provide emergency assistance to small local businesses adversely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It helps businesses pay for critical expenses such as rent or mortgage payments, energy utilities, not, not sewer and water utilities, and costs associated with reopening, and that's directly from the, the actual CARES Act. It's not available for revenue replacement. What we've worked with the, the Chicago County Administrator and the Chicago County HREDA is they would in fact actually administer the program for those, those business relief grants. We thought it would be better to have a collaborative effort, and what we came up with is the grants, as you can see in your packet, there is a grant application. Um, we thought it would be better to have a collaborative effort, and what we came up with is the grants, as you can see in your packet, there is a grant application and give some of the parameters of that. The grants would be up to ten thousand dollars for a business. Now, every business may not have ten thousand dollars, um, in expenses for, related to COVID nineteen. But what would be done then is this, the county would fund seventy percent, in this case, if it was a ten thousand dollar grant, seven thousand dollars. And then the cities have agreed to fund thirty percent. So anytime that there was a City of Wyoming business that applied for a grant, it would be that seventy, thirty, um, mix on these until this, until this portion of, uh, of the, of this phase of grant were to go through. Um, the Shisago County is having this on their agenda tomorrow night, um, for approval, and they would like to move forward on this and have this grant application opened to the public as soon as August tenth. Um, we thought it was important to get this in front of the city council tonight to discuss about this, at the minimum, the small business relief funds. The CARES Act itself will be an ongoing item for the council and staff to keep, um, reviewing and, and discussing. Obviously, there are, this is a first round in this business. You can see we will have other dollars that have been identified. Um, there are still remaining, so they can still be used in this CARES Act package. Um, there's other components of this that, like I said, we'll have future conversations about. Um, council may be curious in regards to actually what kind of different things can we potentially do for our residents, or, um, what kind of help we can do there. Um, once again, um, this is largely something that we'll be working with the, this has to do with a lot of the different programs as far as nonprofits, health and human services that have the ability to do their fiduciary responsibility on residents and determine who would be eligible for those things. Um, the city would not be a good administrator of those dollars. We don't wanna get in the evaluation of individuals', um, uh, expenses or incomes or unnecessary components as far as the, what we may be able to do with some of those dollars to help residents as well. Um, with that, I'll stand for any questions. I know it's a lot to unpack tonight. Like I said, their main focus was to try to get in front of you this small business relief fund, um, to at least have the council, have the council have the ability to ask questions about this and to determine how much money out of these funds you wanna allocate towards this first round of grants, if any. And then from there, like I said, we'll continue to have conversations about this, these CARES Act dollars and how we may continue to do it. But with that, I can open up for any questions from the city council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Linwood. Um, member Schilling, do you have any questions?
I actually do not have any questions. I'm going through this as we speak with my employer as well, so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, member Zirwas?
Uh, Rob did a great job explaining this topic, and therefore I have no questions.
All right, thank you. Member Luger?
I have no questions either.
Member Jaeger? All right, no questions. I'm gonna, um, I think it looks really good. I think that anything that we can do to, um, help our small businesses, I think it's still gonna be a rough, um, six months um, as well, just based on some of the things that I'm hearing within the community. So we wanna make sure that we can help them as much as possible. Um, I do appreciate all the work that is going into this. I do appreciate the state for being able to, um, give us the, the CARES money, um, and seeing the shortfall that was happening within cities as well to be able to, to help take away that burden too, so, um.
Madam, I did have some questions. I, I, I mistakenly muted myself.
Okay, member, um, Jaeger, what are your questions?
Uh, okay, Rob, on the eighty-seven thousand, I take it that's the most up-to-date number?
That is the most update, up-to-date number.
Because I was getting confused when I saw the long-term plan and, and it, or the, the tomorrow's packet. And, well, maybe it was in the budget that it was like a two thousand dollar year-to-date to that point.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm not familiar with what, what reference in the long-term plan, but I, this is the most up-to-date in regards to the eighty-seven thousand that we have for this item tonight.
Um, what is the difference between a first phase and a second phase? Just timing, just, uh?
It's a good question. So the, the first phase is we have the, the county with a set amount of dollars, and then the other cities with a set amount of dollars that their, uh, city councils have allocated towards this, and essentially, this is the first round of, of grant, there's of grant, through the grant process. We talked a lot about having a second phase as well, but largely we wanna see how this first phase goes and, um, to see, I guess, how many of the dollars and the businesses take advantage of these, you know, these grant opportunities, and to really see, you know, do, if we go through, you know, if we did do our ten percent, that'd be approximately sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. To see if we really go through all of that and really say, you know, that this went quickly, it appears there's still a need based on the grant applications that would be bus, there would be interest from businesses that are, um, eligible for these dollars. Do we wanna do a second phase? So it would be, go through this first phase, and then we could come back probably in, um, September, October, and look towards if it was, if it would be prudent to have that second phase of grants.
Okay, um, if a business were to get the grant, get the grant, what would happen if they, if it was found out later that the business was not eligible for the grant? Would we have to repay it then?
Um, as, as far as this process in the application, the businesses are gonna have to provide that information as far as those expenses or those, um, profit and loss that are actually, that we can identify that are actual, um, COVID, or I shouldn't say us, I should say the county, the county HRA EDA is the ones that will be, um, administering the applications. But it, you're right, it's an important component, um, it's something that we wanna make sure that any of those dollars that we're giving are in fact used, uh, towards that business's COVID responses, and they're actually expenses that are or have been incurred. So, um, that'll be an important component of the grant application. Um, in regards to that, for some reason, I don't anticipate it. If, um, if those dollars weren't used appropriately, that would probably come out in an audit, and then we would, um, look, um, for some guidance on that if the business or the city would be eligible to have to return that. Most of the time, in situations like this, it would be the city, so both the county and the city have had this discussion. So there would be some, uh, certain due diligence going on regarding those expenses that the applicants, um, would itemize through that process and to receive the grant.
Okay, and at any time, would there be money available for future economic development rather than repaying?
Um, in regards to that, I know that's, that's something that we've, we haven't quite crossed that yet, and I think a, a conversation that we'll have with the council along with, um, the county as well. Right now, there's only certain areas that this is allowed for as far as economic development. I mean, is there something, something that your council member Jaeger, something that you're thinking of in regards to economic data in a certain area or a certain way to utilize those dollars?
You know, uh, for instance, we always talked about, maybe we should have a dedicated EDA, um, coordinator and, or, you know, somebody to do marketing for the cities, more like North Branch has. Whether, you know, those kind of expenses could also be funded by this.
You could potentially look at, I, I don't think, I guess, the long-term on this to, to be able to put a, bring in a position, um, to have a long-term funding. I guess I would look at this money more as a, like an LGA, or it's gonna be something that, you know, it's not gonna be where you have, if you created a position and tried to utilize these dollars to fund a component of it, you only have so long to utilize the dollars, so maybe you would be able to fund a, an individual, you know, from, basically from that March to November, you could allocate for potentially, if you did have someone on staff or wanted to try to hire someone or use a consultant, um, in regards to potential eligibility for economic development. I'm not certain that those CARES dollars would fall under that if we weren't doing those business grants, that we could actually say how we would shape that as far as the US Treasury's guidance on this to say that, um, these dollars can be used to try to enhance the City of Wyoming's economic development. Although obviously that's a positive, I don't necessarily know that, um, that would be an allowable use.
Okay, um, it wasn't as much the position, but what you said about can the dollars be used to enhance Wyoming's economic development?
Okay, yeah, we can, we can certainly check into that. Like I said, right now, I know that the Treasury, they go through those business grants. I don't necessarily know that there is a component to do that, but we certainly can inquire and see if we could use any of those dollars for that.
Okay, and then the last question, why only ten percent? Why not more?
I think that's, uh, when we, when we evaluated this, uh, we think the city will still have more costs. We think there's other things to take under consideration. You know, the council, if they would like to allocate more dollars to this first round of grants, they certainly can. Um, this is, like I said, what you saw the county do is to allocate a ten, ten percent, um, component, and also a lot of other cities in Shisago County. Um, that isn't an absolute, but, um, we're starting there, and like I said, we could definitely allocate more. We know that we will have future expenses, um, as part of this from staff and potentially other areas that the council may wanna consider when we continue to bring out information in regards to not only our businesses, but potentially some, um, things for our residents as well.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Linwood, I have two questions.
Of course.
First one, if there is a business that has two locations, one in, in Wyoming and one in, um, in North Branch, um, are they able to apply, um, for both cities, and then the county also would be chipping in for both of those businesses or those locations?
You know, that wasn't something that was this, that wasn't something that was discussed, Mayor, but, um, the way that we would, I think that we would handle that is, is i- if it is the same business, they're eligible for one application, and they would have to determine where that per se may be their, their home, home base is, whether it's in Wyoming or North Branch example in this. And then that, that city would be the one that would be, um, providing a component of those dollars, you know, to that individual business. But they wouldn't be eligible for, for two different grant applications or to be able to double dip from the cities. It would be, um, simply them selecting where their headquarters are and then providing that on the application.
Okay, so that is actually, now I have two other questions from that. Okay. So if, um, if the business is granted that money, um, is there any type of, um, item in there that would say that, um, I don't, what I don't wanna see is they get the money and the next week they close their doors. Is there, is there anything like that? Is there any provision, um, for that? Um, granted, I don't wanna be in the business, the city to be in the business of looking at all their, their, um, financials, but I also don't wanna be something where they, they're granted the funds and then they close and the money is not used towards their business.
Sure. Um, I think that's something that the HRA EDA was looking at in regards to some of those, um, applications, whether it's profit and loss statements or expense reports to make sure that, um, those dollars were utilized, and you know, I don't think we have any way to control, um, per se, understood that they're not gonna, they still have to use those for COVID expenses. So if they were to receive them and put them towards the expenses and go out of business the next week, or if it was a month, or if it was two months, or it's three months, I think i- it's the intent and that the, you know, that the, they were acting in good faith along with the documentation that they provided to the county. Um, that's how we would handle it and look at it. I don't think, at the end of the day, they have to expend it on those expenses that would be related, um, through that COVID nineteen pandemic, that they wouldn't be able to go and buy, per se, you know, new product or things like that. It would have to be with, how the application, which is how the county works.
Okay, and my last question is this. I believe I read, um, somewhere over the last couple of weeks, um, the CARES money that we received, um, the applicants, um, should, if, if they received federal loans, the small business loans or the business loans with the PPEs, um, that you could apply for, um, were not eligible for what we're offering right now. Is that correct, or did I misinterpret?
There's, there are some stipulations within that CARES Act, if they received, uh, federal, federal dollars or deed dollars in certain instances. And I know the county has gone through some of that on their application to try to tell if those businesses are in fact eligible for this, these CARES Act grants, if they have already received funding from other sources.
Okay, and these are for smaller businesses, I believe, one through fifty employees?
That is correct, that the, that was the, the county came up with and what the, the administrators came up with to try to, um, seem to be the hardest-hit businesses in regards to that. And certainly, we can continue to evaluate that and see if we would wanna change that or, or raise that number, uh, eligible to other, uh, employers and, and potentially even do that in that second round.
Okay, and tonight, do you need us to say yes or no to the ten percent for the first round, or is, that's kinda what you would wish for us to discuss as well?
I would. I'd like the council to make a, an action in regards to, um, if they're, wanna move forward with, um, I guess collaborating with the county on this small business grant, uh, loan application process, and then identifying that amount that they would like to give, or not give, but, um, send to the county to utilize for this process. I gave the example, the ten percent. Of course, the council can talk about that if they feel that's appropriate, not appropriate. And then is also, as I discussed in my memo, then we would have an agreement, um, that would come before the council on August eighteenth, and that would essentially be, that would how those dollars, essentially that transfer of dollars from the county, uh, excuse me, from the city, just Shisago County HRA EDA, and how they would be administered.
All right, so I think what I'll do, having that information, is again, I'm gonna go around the room. If you could please state that you are for working with the county, um, with this, and a percentage that you are comfortable doing with round one. Does that make sense for everybody? That I can see your heads are shaking from where I can see, so, all right. So I am gonna start with member Zirwas. Member Zirwas, what is your thoughts on this?
I, I'm comfortable with working with the county, and I'm also comfortable with the ten percent.
Okay, thank you. Um, member Jaeger?
Um, I'm comfortable working, okay, I'm not muted. I'm comfortable working with the county. I would like to see at least fifteen percent.
Okay, member Schilling?
I'm comfortable working with the county, and I'm fine with the ten percent.
Okay, um, member Luger?
I'm comfortable working with the county, and ten percent sounds good.
Okay, um, I'm good with the county. I think for me, just starting with that ten percent, um, maybe at some point in time, we're on a round three. Again, um, Rob, just a quick question, how long do we have to spend that money or to be able to give that money out to our?
Right now, right now it's November fifteenth, but the, the application processes on these are gonna be fairly quick. Example, this first round would be August tenth to August twenty-fourth, so, and then they'll go through the process of, of getting those out. So I think we'll certainly have opportunity, uh, for that second round, and then I think, you know, potentially if the county, obviously that'd be a county decision too, if they wanted to try to do a third one, or if they'd be open to the city, you know, doing a third one, because it's still the Shisago County HRA EDA administering it. But I think it's gonna move fast enough, where we'll have some time to see what the response was on that first, this first round of grants to try to, um, identify what kind of dollars maybe we wanna put back into it on a potential second round.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and read this. Um, I'm gonna add a few things into it, being that we are gonna work with the county and that we are supporting the ten percent. Um, so then whoever would like to first and second, it makes it a lot easier. So, uh, number sixteen on our agenda to, um, let's see, head on to this. To consider working with the Shisago County HRA EDA on, um, small business, um, CARES Act dollars with us at contributing ten percent of ours, um, total for our first round. Did that work, Mr. Lunin?
I would just say, switch it from to consider to approve.
To approve, okay. So to approve, working with the, um, Shisago County HRA EDA, um, with the city granting ten percent of their CAREX money, um, to support, um, small businesses. How's that? All right, good. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Member Schilling.
Some more.
Moved.
All right, so member Schilling is a first and member Zirwas is a second. Around the room, please. Member Luger?
Hi.
Member Schilling?
Hi.
Member Zirwas?
Hi.
Member Jaeger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I, so it does pass. Um, Mr. Linwood, will you be giving us updates?
Certainly, certainly will. I'll, I'll, I'll be giving the council an update. As I stated, that the county is reviewing this. They've already allocated their dollars for this, but they'll just be reviewing the grant, um, application process that they're meeting tomorrow. So, um, once we have done, once they have, I'll, I'll probably be talking with the county administrator, uh, Thursday morning to see how that went. And then, um, I'll be letting you know, you know, that it didn't move forward. I can give you an update in my, um, normal Friday update on where that's at. And like I said, we will have a document, uh, for the council to review for that agreement between, uh, City of Wyoming and the Shisago County HRA EDA for those, that transfer those dollars and allocation and those grants.
Okay, and you will be sending that out in your memos that, or the emails, uh, that you send out to all the businesses. So I'm hearing that that has been a great tool.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably look, um, Ms. Dumas and I had a conversation about that, not only though, that email, but we'll probably try to use social media, any kind of response to just really try to make sure that we're making it well-known to all of our local businesses that there is an opportunity, um, to. making it well known to all of our local businesses that there is an opportunity to utilize these grant dollars to, to help them.
All right, perfect. We will move on to number seventeen on our agenda to consider a consulting contract with WSB for the necessary work to be completed at Swenson Park contingent on the receipt of the grant funds for the project. Ms. Dumas, are you taking this one?
I am. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, in June, the city was awarded a grant for the Swenson Park project. It was the Outdoor Recreation Grant through Department of Natural Resources. And we are now in the phase of kind of final approval by state and federal agencies for receipt of those funds. And the city has been in discussions with WSB about what happens after we get our final approval for those funds. So WSB has submitted a contract to do all of the final design and bidding for this project. And their proposal is included in your packet for contingent approval upon the receipt of these funds. And the reason we want to do that is so that once we are awarded those funds, that we can start moving forward right away with that project. The cost of the WSB contract is twenty seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars. Originally, when we submitted the grant, we had budgeted thirty thousand dollars for this part of the project. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. My first, and, and I'm forgetting where we were taking the twenty seven four forty-three out of. What fund? We budgeted that out of?
Rob, are you aware where that's?
Could be our park development fund is what we utilize. We wouldn't, this would be just to enact that contract, but right, we'd, we'd be able to, we have to match half of this grant to that hundred and sixty-six thousand. So for the payment of WSB, this would probably be something that would come out of our, our city dollars. And then obviously through that match of, we identified that thirty thousand, as Ms. Dumas said, for the cost, we would receive, you know, half of that twenty seven thousand amount in the grant process as we ask for dollars back on that.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just couldn't remember exactly how we had done that. So that's my only question. So, member Jaeger?
Okay, um, this is not an extra expense. This will come out of the hundred and sixty-five thousand that we have to match, right?
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Member Zeroas?
I have no questions.
Member Schilling?
No questions.
All right. And member Luger?
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much. So we need a motion to approve the contract with WSB for the necessary work to be completed at Swenson Park contingent on the receipt of the grant funds for the project. Do we have a motion to approve?
So, members Zeroas.
We have a first by member Zeroas. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
We have a second by member Luger. Around the room, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Zeroas?
Hi.
Member Schilling?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. I'm looking forward to getting that park started and seeing all the wonderful things that are going to happen. So I think we've heard some residents already very excited about it. Number eighteen, to discuss the City of Wyoming parcel twenty-one dot zero 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 one two dot three zero and its future use by the City of Wyoming. Mr. Linwood? Are you taking?
Going to start this, but I might, we may interject a few of us on this one, but Ms. Dumas will start.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor, members of council, the city has been approached by Northern Tier Development with an interest in the city property, the one listed, for the purposes of acquiring some additional wetland credits. But in preliminary kind of discussions among staff, it has been identified that this specific property has some unique characteristics that make it very attractive as a potential site if the city were interested in pursuing, investing in a dog park in Wyoming. And this item, or this question of if the city is interested in having a dog park was brought to the Park Advisory Commission at their meeting last night. And there was a very strong interest in developing a dog park eventually. And this site, the commission thought was really great as an opportunity, both as being kind of somewhat removed from residential properties as well. I think the point was brought up that having a dog park along the highway would be a great resource if people are traveling to pull off the road, grab a bite to eat, come into town. Could be a really great way to bring in some people traveling along the highway. So the discussion here and the question for the city council is not whether or not we are going to start building a dog park on here. It is whether or not we want to continue exploring this as a potential option for this park. Or if the city council is not interested in maintaining this and wants to kind of keep that question open for development purposes.
And okay, Ms. Dumas, I just want to clear up something. So really what we're asking is not necessarily that it's a, a dog park. Just so I'm understanding, that we want to make sure that we keep that parcel for future development. It could be a dog park. It could be, it could be not a park whatsoever, right? It could be, you know, snow shoeing or something, right? So it's not specifically for that. So, but it is land that, I believe, Mr. Linwood, we were going to put the water tower on?
That was the original purchase. We purchased that parcel in tax forfeiture and it was evaluated for the location of our water tower after soil borings were done. It was determined that it wouldn't be, it'd be cost prohibitive due to the pilings that would have to go down on that parcel, you know. And I, I think, I think as we received the letter from the developer that's next door in regards to, you know, if they would, if the city would be interested in, in giving it, and I think Ms. Dumas gave a really great summation of through the process of this and trying to go through the, you know, asking the, the park commission, that it was something internally we discussed about maybe utilizing that for a future park or dog park being its location, that it maybe wouldn't be bothersome to people. But more or less, if we want to keep that parcel with the city, the developer is asking that the city give it. If we'd be interested in selling it, it isn't that simple. There's a conveyance portion that's statutorily guided if we were to give it back to the county. So we can't just say sell it. We'd have to give it back to the county. It would go through sheriff sale. The county isn't having any of those sheriff sales this year. As far as it being, if they didn't receive it, if they didn't, they wouldn't move forward with the wetland bank in that back area, that wouldn't matter. So more of the question is of the council, if you're interested in potentially looking at giving that back to the county. So, you know, if there was some sort of development, really, there isn't any kind of development. They'll be used, utilized on it. The letter you can see, that's for, it's for wetland mitigation credits. More the, the idea like is Ms. Dumas presented, that you know, potentially that could be a good spot down the line for that, that characteristic, as that's been talked about at some of our city festivals that we've gotten that input from residents. But the bigger picture, if the council just wants to hold on to that and wait and see what we could potentially develop it to down the road, or if they'd be interested in going through that conveyance process and giving it back to the county.
Okay, that's more clear. Thank you. I appreciate that. So we'll open it up for questions. Members Zeroas?
I would be in favor of holding it for future development.
Okay. Member Luger?
So I had just a couple of questions. What, I mean, do we have, and I know, I know we like to work and we like to partner and kind of give people, developers, the time that they need. I'm wondering if we have any kind of even slight timeline on when, you know, what we're looking at in terms of a developer or a development that we'd be looking at adjacent to it. Do we know kind of where we at in the process of exploring that?
Sure. Mark or Fred, I don't know if you want to talk about that wetland mitigation. They, they have applied for a wetland, wetland credits and that, some of that back area there. And Mark or Fred, I don't know if one of you want to interject. Mark, you may be even more familiar with that process. Because I know someone, and you're some wetland specialists that have looked at this back there.
Yeah, and I'm not entirely up to speed with where that is currently in the process. I know that the applicant has quite a bit of work ahead of them just to, to get that site in order. And there's a five-year monitoring period before those credits are available. But I think the city too can utilize that for stormwater management. They can use it to develop their own wetland baking system, whether or not we have wetland fill on a project where we need to mitigate. We could potentially mitigate on this site as well. And I think there is value to keeping that in city control rather than, than, than relinquishing that property. And Fred, maybe you can comment on the exact status. I have, I know Dustin Simonson's been involved with that process and I've not been real close to that wetland, wetland baking project that the developer is looking at.
Really don't have anything to add. I did talk to Dustin a little bit about it, but it's still in the process, just like you, you already said.
They're very early on in that process and we haven't gotten, to my knowledge, a detailed schedule or timeline, what they're, what they're looking at.
Member Luger, does that answer your question?
Yes, it answers one of them. My, my follow-up question then is, you know, as, as Ms. Dumas explained, there's some really good like that it would be a good potential location for a dog park for several reasons. To, you know, the Park Advisory Commission is really interested in, in, in pursuing the option of a dog park in the city. That was really clear from, from last night's meeting. And I'm wondering if, if, if this chunk of land is more valuable for other reasons, can we explore other places in the city? You know, to kind of uphold the goals of, of the Park Advisory Commission. Are there other spots in the city where we can, we can think about where it would be appropriate to, to put a dog park?
We absolutely can look at some other locations within the community. Dog parks, as I mentioned, have some challenges to where we locate them due to the noise that they can generate. And so that would be a consideration with any parcel. I don't think at this point, we have any other parcels that have been identified as being as amenable to this type of amenity in the community. But absolutely, if there is an interest in the community, we can continue conversations and looking for opportunities elsewhere in the city.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Member Schilling?
I'm actually in favor of hanging on to it.
Okay, thank you. And member Jaeger?
I, when I read Northern Tier's letter, they say that their consultant described the land as already wet and unbuildable. If that's, is that truly the case? And if it is, is it suitable for a dog park or anything else besides wetland mitigation?
I think.
Who was saying that?
Yeah, I'm not, I think, I think the, the idea, or maybe in that letter, I think when they say not buildable would be for a, a, a structure, a house or a building or due to maybe some of those soil conditions, I think in regards to if it was potentially ever a dog park, I think that's more simplistic where the area is probably dry enough where you could have a parking area near Kettle River and have the back area with the fenced in. So I don't think, I, I don't necessarily, I think the dog park would be usable. I think it's a matter of that you probably wouldn't want to, you know, based on, like I said, I would probably go to Mr. Erickson and they're, they're experts in regards to some of the soils and hydrology back there. But suitable maybe for a, a use like that for a park, but not to put a, a building or house on, would be my guess when they state that in the letter.
I can comment on that briefly as well. When we were looking at this site as a potential site for the water tower, we did complete a wetland delineation on the site. And there are wetlands on the site, but there is upland as well. And so there is upland on the site that we were looking at. And I, I don't certainly recall, that was a number of years ago. I don't recall the square footage of the amount of upland, but there is upland on that site.
My concern was if it was that wet, you know, people getting wet feet and wet dogs playing in the park. And it sounds like that may not be the case.
I think, I think that would be part of that investigative process. If there was any real steam to move forward that, I think there probably would have to be some consideration in regards to see if it would be, you know, that the back area would be, you know, usable if it was, you know, mowed, if it is upland enough. We'd have to look at that delineation and really see if there was any kind of potential there for that, I guess would be my comment.
Okay. That's fine.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm of two minds about it. I mean, I don't want to hang on to this forever. But, you know, if, if they're going to pay us for this land, fine, but since we would have to give it back and they'd have to go through a, a sheriff's sale, we just might as well keep it.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to remind council that it, we're not discussing that that is going to be used for a dog park. That really, right now, the motion that we're going to vote on is to keep it instead of letting it go back to the county. So that is the, the motion that's being made. I'll read that. To approve the City of Wyoming's parcel twenty-one dot zero 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 one two dot three zero stay for future use by the City of Wyoming. So I need a motion to approve.
Member Sharon makes that motion.
All right. And do we have a second? I'll make that second. Mayor Iverson makes the second. I'll go around the room. Luger, do you want to make that second?
Sure.
Okay, so it's good. Sorry. You know what? It's nice having all the faces because it makes it a little bit easier to be able to see what's going on. So faces are a good thing. All right. So around the room, please. We are, yes or no? So, member Jaeger?
Hi.
Member Zeroas?
Hi.
Member Schilling?
Hi.
Member Luger?
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. So we're happy to keep that parcel within the, within the City of Wyoming for now. All right. We are going to move on to number nineteen. To consider a request from Mary and Rudy Olson regarding assessment on parcel twenty-one dot one 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 two two dot zero zero and twenty-one dot one 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 two three dot zero zero. Mr. Linwood, are you taking this one?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. Mayor, members of council, I'm going to bring up, and I'm actually going to try to actually share my screen appropriately if you hang tight with me for a second. For the actual.
Technology is not always our friend. We've known that today.
Right. I apologize. Just give me one second here.
If anybody wants to follow along, we are on page one forty-two of our council packet. All right. Sorry, Mr. Linwood.
Can everyone see the parcels?
Yes.
Okay. This is a, council, this was a request that I received from Mary and Rudy Olson. They are the owners of the two parcels that you can see there, that are near Heinz Lake Villas, near Excent. To give council a little bit of background on this, in two thousand nine, the City of Wyoming moved forward to construct two hundred and fifty-seventh street. That was a street from Highway sixty-one. What's the main component to locate the Excent business at the time in that corner there, as you can see on the map? Through this process, the city moved forward with a normal four twenty-nine process that they did. They looked at assessments and, on all these different parcels that could be identified. There were twelve in all and two of those parcels being Rudy and Mary Olsons. This was actually brought forward by the Olsons in regards that there was, what did, there were legal, legal proceedings with this that they contested the amounts that the city originally put on these parcels. There were legal proceedings. And at the end of that, the court system did rule in the favor of the city and upheld those assessment amounts on those parcels. In two thousand and ten, the original amounts on these parcels on parcel two-one dot one one two zero was a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in assessments. And then parcel two-one dot one one two three zero was two hundred and forty thousand dollars in assessments. And those were over a fifteen-year duration, so be completed in two thousand and twenty-four. The Olsons opted to pay the first half of those, on each of those parcels in two thousand and ten, first half taxes. And then from there, they moved forward and actually put those two parcels in green acres with Shisago County. What is green acres? Green acres provides property tax relief for owners for agricultural purposes. And it also allows for special assessments to be deferred. So that's where those parcels have ha- have sat since. With that being said, the original assessments on those, that the other individuals on this, this property and this assessment went for were five point three percent annually. What happens is even though your assessments are deferred in green acres, that interest rate still continues to reflect on those annual payments, even if they're not being made. So currently, if there was a payoff amount to be made on those parcels, they have, they have grown due to the interest that's collected on those annually. So for example, for parcel two-one-one-one-two-zero, it's approximately two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. And parcel two-one-one-one-two-three, it's three hundred and seventy-one thousand. I have had conversations with the Olson that they have stated that they have. I have had conversations with the Olson that they have stated that they have had conversations with the owners of Heimslake Villas. And they are interested in acquiring those two parcels for a, a future and similar development that they have now, is now full on that original development. The question that the Olsons have asked the city is that if the city council, there are certain situations that they have identified where a, a city would maybe not make them pay for the full amounts of those assessments due. This is often usually in a tax forfeit scenario, not so much in a situation like this, when you have a property owner that's just had those assessments deferred over a, over a portion of time. The City of Wyoming has had to continue to pay on these bonds. And we do take into consideration that we have been paying that assessment portion. So every time we levy for the debt payment on these, not only the city and all the residents and businesses in the city, pay for that component of that interest on those assessments that we can make those bond payments. So they are requesting that the city would entertain some sort of reduction in the assessments on those parcels that they can potentially look to develop that land. And that is what is being presented to the city council tonight for discussion and to make a determination if you'd rather see those assessments leave, be where they are, or if you'd like to have any kind of further conversation about a reduction.
Mr. Linwood, question about the green acres. Can anybody apply for green acres? So let's say we have some assessments coming up and into this situation and we make this a precedence. How many other people are we going to say, I'm going to call green acres on this?
It's usually for agricultural property and usually the county has a conversation with the city to try to identify if the parcels are in fact eligible for that. That wasn't the case, my understanding, back in 2010, when this was done, that the county just went forward and did it. We have had a few other projects that taken into consideration on a few different parcels for street projects. If a property was currently in green acres, this is something when you're obviously dealing with agricultural lands that a, a property owner can do, but it's, like I said, you know, it, it's a deferment. It doesn't necessarily stop the assessments from continuing to compound interest over the time that you're deferring them. So like I said, it is something that is in place, it's statutory and it's allowable. So if it did meet the criteria, potentially other projects, other individuals could do it.
And the interest, the 5.3% is just kept compounding on the 168,000 and the 234, correct? So had they been paying down, had they been paying, you know, yearly, monthly, whatever, they would not be owing as much because it's compounding onto the second half, correct?
Correct, right. There'd be, it'd be going on a normal amortization schedule that we would use for any of our assessments. So like I said, with these, there is only approximately four years left on the payments for these. And this bond would end in 2024.
Okay. All right. I'll open it up for further questions. Member Jaeger.
Um, so basically the taxpayers have been paying this bond.
Correct.
Did the Olsons know when they went, put the land into green acres, that the interest would be deferred and would come due when they sold the land?
I can't, I can't state that for them, but it is state statute. So my guess would be that they potentially looked into some of those, those statutory requirements that it was the same back then as it is now. But like I said, I've not, I've not had that conversation, if there were that or not.
Have we ever, in my, to my recollection, we have not reduced assessments for anybody else.
To my knowledge, council member Jaeger, we have not had any situations in my time at the city where we've done a reduction in assessment for any kind of projects. I'm not aware of any, not to say that it's never gone. It's happened in the history of the city. Like I said, I think in most municipalities, sometimes when you'll see this happen is potentially if there is something in forfeiture. Example, we have a few other parcels in forfeiture in this area. And what's, there's an outstanding assessment amount on them. If the council were approached by developer and you knew there was going to be something substantial, maybe it's not a housing development. Maybe it's a, a major industrial, you know, company or, or maybe a large commercial component that comes in. Maybe it's something that the council would entertain, but it's usually in the case where a property is already forfeiture and the individual is not in control of it anymore and is not to necessarily gain on that property either.
And so whatever the Olsons sell the land to Heimsl, you know, the developer of Heimslake Villa, that would be, I mean, they're going to, they would, yeah, they're just out, outgoing to sell the land, correct?
They would, correct. If they were to have a sale of the land through the statutory process of green acres, all deferred special assessments are due at the time of the sale of land. So they would owe what I've stated in the, for that 2020 total amount.
Okay. Personally, I, I don't think this is a precedent we want to set.
All right. Thank you. Members Zirwas.
No, this is a 20% like everybody else paid, right? That assessment?
This was a new road, so it was a little different, but it would be similar that we had the, this is a new road, new sewer, new water. And this is what the assessed amounts was based on the improvements to the land and based on a lot of different, the proceedings as far as valuations of the land and valuations after those services were put in. So that was what, at the time, that was the agreed upon assessed amount that the city put on them. And then also that the court system said were correct.
Well, my stance, the last time I went to court with them was to make them pay the assessment, that was figured to be fair. And I haven't changed my attitude on that or my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Members Zirwas. Member Schilling.
I think Linda was trying to add something, Mayor.
Oh, sorry. Again, video is so nice to have pictures. Sorry, Member Jaeger.
Um, when we did this, when, when we, when I, when we did this originally, we had like huge books to justify the assessment where a, and a very detailed cost benefits analysis was done to uphold the assessments.
Correct.
So I just wanted, I wanted to add that, that a lot of due diligence was done in the beginning.
Right.
All right. Member Schilling.
I don't really have anything to add. I just, I'm not in favor of waiving any assessments. This is, if you do a rough calculation, it's about 10 buildable acres. There's a pretty nice piece of real estate sitting there for the last, how many years they've owned it? So I guess we could reevaluate, in my opinion, if they do sell it to the Helmslake Villas. You know, maybe we can consider something, but this time I'm not in favor of waiving any assessments on anything.
Okay, thank you. Member Lugur?
So do we have any documentation that they're in conversations with, with developers?
Other than, I believe Mr. Weck has received just from the Johnsons that just, just to try to determine the number of units that could be placed on those parcels, but we don't have any kind of, any kind of documentation other than just their verbal that they are in negotiations for those. You know, and I think even if this was something the council would entertain, we would need more documentation to actually see if there's an option agreement or something on the table, but we have right now just a verbal.
Okay. What are they, on what basis do they have the green acres qualification? I mean, are they like farming or do they have animals or what is?
It's been, it's been used for farming for crops for the last 10 years, just different, different things. I don't know, Mr. Weck, if, if you.
They've been leasing it to a local farmer to allow them to grow the crops on it.
I would be in favor of possibly exploring some relief if we have documentation of there being some work with developers. And I, and I don't mean waive everything. I mean, consider the, consider what we can, how we can, I don't know, not, definitely not waive all the, all the assessment, but possibly provide some relief on, on the interest. But I think that's getting ahead of ourselves at this point in time.
Right. Thank you. I know that I'm not in favor of setting a precedence on this. I think that, you know, we, we do assessments for a reason. We do bonding for a reason. We've had many projects right now with assessments and, and people are paying them. And I believe, my hope is that the Olsons did understand what it meant by green acres. I'm thinking so based on the conversations from the two council members that have been on council the longest and have been a part of this. So I'm, I'm actually not in, in favor of any type of request. I believe that that is putting that on the back of our other residents at this time in businesses as well. So, all right, if there is no further discussion, we do need to, if I'm understanding correctly, Mr. Lunin, that we need to say that we're not going to, or that we're in favor of keeping it the way it is, or what's kind of a motion, or do we not need a motion?
Well, I do believe city staff was looking for some sort of direction. So if you're just, you would just be denying the request, at this time, you'd be denying the request of, of the property owners as has been presented to the city staff. So just a denial of the request.
Okay. So we need, we need a, we need, what do we need? So we, as.
A motion, a motion to deny the request from Mary and Ruby Olson regarding the assessments on parcels 211112200 and 211112300.
Thank you. That's perfect. So whatever Mr. Lunin said, that's what we're going with. So do we have a motion to deny?
Member Schilling will make that motion.
Member Schilling is the first. Do we have a second?
Second, Member Zirwas.
Second by Member Zirwas around the room. Member Jaeger.
Hi.
Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Schilling.
Hi.
Member Lugur.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson is an I. I don't know why that was so difficult for me, Mr. Lunin. So thanks for stepping in on that. All right, number 20. To consider a special meeting on August 19th, 2020 for the annual performance review and future contract consideration for City Administrator Rob Linwood. I'm going to actually defer this to Mr. Lunin probably to discuss this. I don't think Mr. Linwood should. Otherwise, I can take it as well, based on just if that date works. And if there's anything else you want to say.
Certainly, Mayor Iverson, members of council, as you know, each year we, we conduct an annual review for Administrator Linwood. We had sent out the review packets to all the council members. We now have received all of those back. However, in consideration of the fact that this review is conducted in closed session, it's, it's a private review, as well as the fact that we will be distributing the review sheets. I guess I know Mayor Iverson, you and Administrator Linwood had talked about this, but I believe the, the proposal here is that this would be an in-person council meeting with appropriate social distancing and, and all necessary precautions. And so we would be proposing both a joint meeting that would go through the review of the city administrator. It would be a closed session, as well as this is a contract year for Administrator Linwood. So we would discuss his contract at that time as well, which would also be a part of that closed session. And so this is just a proposal to set the date for that meeting, see if it works over with calendars, with the understanding that we would get a notice and it would be a closed session to handle those two items specifically.
Okay. And then just to clarify that it would be at City Hall with social distancing. So just a clarification of that, that would not be a Zoom meeting at that time. So I'm going to go around the room, just some questions, or if the 19th works for everybody. So I'll just start out the 19th works for me. I don't think we set a time. So either six or seven o'clock, I would like to propose six o'clock if possible on that Wednesday night. But it depends on everybody else's calendar as well. So with that, I'm going to open up with Member Schilling.
I have no problem with that time or that date.
Perfect. Thank you. Member Lugur.
That works for me.
Perfect. And Member Jaeger.
Six o'clock, you said?
Yes.
Fine.
Okay. And Member Zirwas.
I don't have a calendar with me. What day of the week is that?
That's a Wednesday.
Okay, that's fine.
Perfect. All right. So it looks like, I think I got everybody. It looks like, and we don't need a motion for that, right? So it looks like we'll have that meeting at 6:00 PM, August 19th at City Hall. It is closed door with appropriate, appropriate social distancing. Right? Everybody just nod your head. Okay.
We should have a motion, we should have a motion, actually.
You want a motion?
Well, it's a special meeting, so we could, yes, please.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve August 19th, 2020 at 6:00 PM for the annual performance review and future contract consideration for City Administrator Rob Linwood. I'll be the first to make that move. Do we have a second? Or that motion, sorry. Second by Member Zirwas around the room, please. Member Jaeger.
Hi.
Member Zirwas.
Hi.
Member Schilling.
Hi.
Member Lugur.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson. So that does, that is approved. All right. So we're going to go council reports. And then I actually would like to go to Mr. Erickson and Chief Hoppy when we're all done, just, just to put them on notice. So be thinking about what you want to say. All right. Member Schilling, what do you got going on since we last met?
Ah, the last time we met was actually the last council meeting. I don't have a whole lot to add. I was on vacation again last week. I just would like to thank Rob and all the staff for really honestly working their butts off. I know a lot of people are putting in a lot of extra time and I think things are running actually very smooth considering the situation that we're currently in. So I'd like to thank them for that and everybody for watching. And that was all I had.
All right. Thank you. And as always, we'll go to Member Zirwas then. What do you have going, Member Zirwas?
Well, I attended the special tour commission meeting last Wednesday, excuse me, last Friday morning. After some heated discussion, the board voted six to two to contract with Violia, a private company to run the plant. I was highly disappointed in that view because I voted against it, as well as some of the people that are working there. One of them resigned instantly. A member of this board that's been there 35 years and the chairman was so upset over it. He resigned instantly at the end of the meeting. And I feel sorry for the employees because, well, one of the employees resigned also. So I, I'm just very disappointed. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Member Jaeger.
Oh, well, I attended the Rush Line meeting on July 23rd. The, we approved, the Rush Line approved the task force workpad and budget. So in the, the BRT project, the task force is also involved in various projects such as coordinating with the Met Council and Metro Transit to monitor the performance of 275, encouraging other transit agencies such as Hotland Express to provide additional bus service in the Rush Line corridor as demand warrants. Corridor preservation is committed to coexistence of the rail corridor with other transportation modes, including multi-use trails and bus transit, and continuing to work with MinDOT to promote the implementation of the I-35E Minpass expansion. The task force is funded by in-kind contributions of staff time while its insurance is paid for by the regional rail authority and county member contributions. The tax, the Rush Line also received a grant. Administration awarded a $1.25 million competitive grant to support transit-oriented development planning along the Rush Line Bus Rapid Transit route. And finally, we heard an update on the Bus Rapid Transit. Work continues on the project. It's currently in environmental analysis, which will be, which is expected to be completed in the spring of 2021. The goal is to offer bus service from Union Depot to White Bear Lake every 10 to 15 minutes, seven days a week, while looking at continuing bus service to Forest Lake on the hour. Over 1,200 people have been engaged at more than 170 events since 2018. The engagement and input has led to various changes in the project, for examples of different additional stations and changes in station's location. The next steps for this. The next steps for this project include the transfer of the project to the Met Council along with rebranding the project to the Purple Line in April twenty twenty-one. Construction is expected to take place in April two thousand, in April in twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six. And with that, I thank everybody for watching on YouTube Tube and that's my report.
Member Jaeger, I I have a couple of questions regarding Rushline, um, and Mr. Linwood as well. How long has, how long has Wyoming been participating in the Rushline discussion?
As long as I can remember.
Yeah, I would, I would agree for quite, yeah, I've been part of that for quite some time. I don't know the exact, but a long time.
And member Jaeger, do you see any potential of it coming to Wyoming and and Stacy and North Branch? Has there been discussions on that?
Well, at the current rate they're going, it's going to take a long time. If you figure about thirty years for the project from start to end with this, this uh, Bus Rapid Transit, you know, given, you know, how many, at least a decade before it goes up to Forest Lake. What I've been doing as we've gone through this, uh, the analysis and discussions have been to advocate for getting the transit up closer to Wyoming. Part of that resulted in constant discussions about having a bus, uh, a continuing bus at least up to Forest Lake as a start. I do, there is value in maintaining our, you know, we do have a vote in it as long as somebody wants to go down to the meetings or do the meetings on Zoom, I think there's at least value to keep, to watching it. But after all, we've got guys from Pine City and it, and you know, figure when it's gonna come to Pine City, it's gonna be long after it ever comes to Wyoming.
And how many people make up that commission, member Jaeger?
The corridor runs from um, St. Paul up to Hinkley. So you have the potential for every municipality in that in the uh, corridor. And and the counties of Pine County, Ramsey County, DeSago County, and a missing one.
Yeah, but my question is this, how many people currently attend those meetings on average? That are from up north?
That are from up north? I'll be quite honest, um, there was a contingent from Pine County, but the but places like North Branch, Harris have not been showing up mo- at Stacy too, mostly because the project is only going as far as White Bear Lake.
Okay, awesome. Thank you for those, thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate that. Uh, member Luger?
Uh, I attended the park board or the park advisory commission meeting last night. Um, in addition to uh, what was discussed during tonight's meeting, uh, the park advisor commission also heard a presentation from the O H K Grange organization um, and received an update from Mr. Almazal regarding the tree board, including removal of dead trees, planting of new trees, um, and moving uh, forward with the Tree USA program. Um, and then the last piece of new business the park advisory commission discussed um, was a list of ideas for engaging residents on the development of railroad park. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I'll keep mine short so we can get Mr. Erickson and Chief Hoppy in. Um, I attended the planning commission meeting, the park board meeting and the sewer commission meeting both in person and then when we did have the Zoom uh, presentations as well. So with that, I'd like to switch over to Mr. Erickson and then from there, Chief Hoppy. Mr. Erickson, how are we doing on Kettle River? You're muted.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Am I still muted?
Nope, you're good.
My screen said still muted. Sorry about that. All right, if I could, I'm just gonna share my screen and uh, give a just an update here. Uh, everybody see my screen okay here?
Not yet.
All right.
There we go, now.
Okay, it is up now, okay.
Yep, now it's up.
Just wanted to quick provide an update here on the Kettle River, or on the, I guess the Kettle River neighborhood, we can call it, but um, really, there's three uh, areas included with this project and we call it area one. Here that includes two sixty-first lane, two hundred and sixty-first street, two hundred and sixty-second street, we have Emerald. And then we also have area two, two hundred and sixty-third street, two hundred and sixty-third street court. And then we also have um, area four to the north. That that really um, has not started yet up there. I'll just give a summary of where things are at on the southern area, area one. Um, all the clearing and grubbing has been completed. Uh, the storm sewer is complete and they are installing drain tile and the uh, roadway is currently being built. They've sub, they're subcutting the poor materials out, replacing it with sand. And so uh, we expect that to continue uh, for the next week and a half. We do expect curb and gutter to begin roughly the third week in August. And so we're a little ways out with that yet, but they are actively working on that. Um, the storm sewer is being constructed with a separate crew currently right now on two hundred and sixty-third street. They will be finishing that this week. And they'll be moving to area three uh, to work on storm sewer. So they got two crews, one crew uh, working ahead of them doing the storm sewer construction and that's being followed by a street construction. And so when they finish the street construction uh, with the crew that's building the roadway, um, they'll move off of the phase area one and move on to area two while they start to build the concrete curb and gutter and uh, and paving that first segment. And so we do expect that to occur in phases with paving, so it won't remain gravel for a long period of time while they're continuing to work on the north. So they are working diligently with multiple crews. They're making great progress. We finally have a dry stretch. And um, they're, they're really making good progress right now.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. It seems like this is a bigger project or taking, I don't wanna say taking longer, it just is a bigger project.
It is, yeah, it's a pretty significant project. They're uh, on track and and on schedule yet for their completion dates. We're pleased with that. Um, and then one other uh, update just quickly on the um, the woods of, I'm sorry. The Shoreview two development and I'm drawing a blank. I think it's the Preserve at Comfort Lake. Um, is what the name had changed to, but they are um, currently completed with the storm sewer. They're installing the drain tile throughout the development and they'll begin uh, road building next week as well. So they're making good progress there and meeting with a few residents and having some conversations with questions on how it ties into their existing neighborhoods and things like that, but things are going well there as well.
Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. It's always good to hear from you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Hoppy, there's some great things uh, happening in the neighborhoods as we've had this meeting today.
Uh, absolutely, uh, mayor. It, um, with all that we got going on in twenty twenty with COVID and everything else in our communities, it's easy to forget that today is National Night Out. Um, disappointing for us that that we haven't had the opportunity to celebrate and with our community like we normally do in the park. But I have deployed uh, officers into the neighborhoods armed with our normal giveaways. Um, and they've been making the rounds, stopping at residences and uh, that they're, the people are still enjoying National Night in their spots. And you know, a lot of those giveaways, the rest of the until we're taking pictures and just talking with neighbors and friends. So that we don't lose track and get disconnected with that National Night Out. So um, our people are out, they're, they're do what we can in twenty twenty to give a little bit for National Night Out, but it definitely has not been forgotten.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I um, was pretty excited. I actually heard a couple of people talk about it uh, at work today. So uh, it's always exciting to have that in and um, have our officers out. So appreciate you doing that and and we'll be excited for next year, definitely. We'll probably have to buy twice as many hot dogs than we did in the past because we'll have that many more showing up because they'll be excited to be back, so.
I think we're gonna plan for an epic twenty twenty-one National Night Out. Um, everybody definitely should stay tuned and we'll see you next year.
I agree, definitely. All right, um, so thanks, everybody, for a great night. We need a motion to adjourn. So have at it. I'm not gonna go around the room. We need a first and a second and thumbs up after that.
Oh, good, Jen.
We got a first, we have a second.
Second.
Second, all right, everybody, thumbs up. Have a good night and we are adjourned. Be safe. Have a good night.